At this time, I'll accept a motion to end the closed session and return to open meeting. Still moved? Is there a second? Is there any discussion? Roll call. Commissioner Sumner? Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Gould?
Yes.
Commissioner Gosvig there yet? Commissioner Carlson says yes, that's already four we have to pass. We'll move on to the open meeting. Any new employees out there today? I don't see any. Identify future work meeting topics.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Um, we've been renaming lakes lately, and it got me thinking. Uh, if any one of us or future commissioner or a citizen group uh ever wanted to memorialize, uh, name a building after somebody or a stretch of road or a bridge, uh, the county should have a policy on that. Um, so I'd like to put that out there as a uh future work making meeting topic. Um, we'll call it Memorial and Naming Policy.
Okay. Craig, were you able to catch that? Mute, mute.
What, what was that? What was he saying there? Memorial?
Can you, can you say that again, Joe?
Um, Memorial and Naming Policy, uh, thinking that the county should have a policy when it comes to uh naming buildings or uh, uh, roads or bridges in case a future board or or a citizen group wanted to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any objections? No, Tom's not in, but Diane, you make sure you tell Tom, put that on a future work meeting. Thank you. Uh, if anybody else? At this time, we'll, yeah, okay, Joe.
Um, K R L S presentation, um, budget update, I think would be good timing for Melissa to come in.
And all, oh. Yeah, we probably would normally do that so you can coordinate.
We'd normally do that.
Coordinate that with Tom.
Yep.
Okay.
Uh, but then also Airport Authority. I know we're hearing from Jasby tonight, uh, but uh, since I've been on the board the last two years, I've never seen a presentation from the Executive Director or Airport Authority just on an update, uh, recent happenings and 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 plans for the future.
Sounds like a good idea.
And also Paul Bunny in Transit.
Oh, that's on my list. Thank you.
That's it.
I'm glad you brought that up because I had forgotten about that. Um, all right. Any objections to any of that? Okay. At this time, we'd like to invite Dr. John Eggers to the podium and tell us about the project graduate program.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman and and other commissioners. I really appreciate this opportunity to come here again. I think this is about my fourth or fifth time since 2017 when we first started. So I want to thank you again for your services. Good to see Joe, fellow educator, and John and Richard, and my friend Tim from Red Lake. And, uh, I should have brought flowers. I'm sorry I didn't, but but Ms. Hart beat me to it. So, boy, they look nice, you know, those flowers up there. Anyway, one of the questions that we think we need to remind ourselves is why should we graduate 100% of our youth? And just a few simple answers is number one, it's the right thing to do. You know, we need to graduate all of our kids. So it's the right thing to do. Plus, high school, people that have their high school diploma are more likely to vote, and that's been shown by research. Also, they're more likely to live longer. Think about that. People who have their high school diploma are more likely to live longer. They're less likely to use drugs. They're less likely to get in public assistance. They're less likely to be incarcerated. So it's just a myriad of reasons why uh, why we need to work harder on getting our kids graduated, uh, from high school. When I first started this initiative back in 2017, actually, it was earlier than that. I was asking myself two questions. One question is, is can we do this? Can we actually graduate 100% of our youth? That was really the wrong question. The right question should have been, should we do this? And I think the answer to that is is yes, we should. Well, since that time, now all of you have a recent copy. I want to give you an update of what what's happened in the last year or so. All of you have a copy of the current graduation rates in area schools, not only in this county, but surrounding schools as well. And you can see, you know, that we we're doing very good with our A and B students. I mean, they're all graduating. And but it's it's the students who are struggling that we're still working hard with. And our graduation rate in Beltrami County is still around 60, 65%. Sometimes it goes up a little bit, sometimes it goes down. But it just shows the need that we need to get the community involved in their schools. I've been trying for years and years and years and and as a public educator, we just haven't done it. So that's why we need to involve the community. One of the things that I worked on this past year was looking at a correlation between drug use and high school graduation. And I found that the the kids who are graduated have are less likely to use drugs. Now, think about that. They're less likely to use drugs. So to me, the greatest preventive medicine, the greatest preventative prescription activity is to work harder on getting kids to graduate. And when we do so, we'll have less kids, fewer kids using drugs. Well, we also worked, uh, this past year, we in March of this year, we launched a a dropout prevention hotline. As far as I know, it's the only hotline in the United States that's specifically geared for dropout prevention. And you have the number there. It's it's four, 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 stay, S T A Y, two, one, eight, four, 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 stay. And we're trying to get the word out with that hotline number. So one of the things you can do is that if you have any publication, when you talk to your constituents, is just remind them of the hotline number. And so anything you could do along that regards, then that would be would be appreciated. Uh, then the other thing is that what more can you do? I really, you know, I really appreciate. Last night I spoke to the Black Duck City Council. And I've spoken to the Clearbrook City Council and the Division City Council, and all of them are very supportive of this of this initiative, you know, which is which is which is good, you know? And last night, the Black Duck City Council again, uh, again, gave me a passed resolution to support high school graduation. Maybe that's something that the that the Beltrami County Commissioners could do would be pass the resolution in support of all high school graduates in the county. And again, that would just show show that you're aware of the importance of high school graduation and and even though it it seems like a little significance resolutions, but you never know. And I always tell people this who ask me, well, how are we doing with high school graduation? I say, well, the glasses have folk. I say, well, what do you mean by that? I said, well, you never know when a person who has seen a bookmark or a poster that says, be sure and graduate from high school, or don't forget to graduate from high school. Maybe that resonated with that individual. Maybe because of that, maybe their mother or father saw it, their grandparents saw it, or they, the student saw it. Maybe they just rang a bell in their brain and says, well, I'm going to work hard on graduating. So you never know when your influence stops. So so I'm very hopeful about this, and I really believe we can, we can get this done. And I'll leave you with this, too. If there's if you know of anybody that would like to work closer with me and other people about this initiative, you know, we could still use some help with just getting the word out about the need to graduate and and looking at what what else can we do? We have a we have this resolution now. We have this goal of 100%. Uh, it's approved by the county. We have a hotline number. We are passing out brochures and 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 posters that advertise this. But what else can we do as a community? So if you know of anybody else that would like to help out, uh, we'll just pass along their name. And with that in mind, we'd be glad to take any questions, uh, you might have on the board. Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Again, Tim, Richard, John, and Joe, and thanks for listening.
Thanks, Dr. Ern.
Talk to you next year.
Thank you very much. Let's move on to the deed labor market analysis. And I apologize, we're running behind.
All right, well, I'll go as fast as I can.
Thank you. You took that hint very well.
So in my role as a deed labor market analyst, uh, we were in a situation now where we have the the tightest labor market that that we've seen in our lifetimes. Um, and it's certainly the tightest since we've had statistics. So I'm asked a question a lot.
Can we get an introduction?
Oh, sure. I'm sorry. Anthony, can you introduce?
Absolutely. Hi, I'm Anthony Schaffhauser, and I am the deed, uh, regional labor market analyst. I I work for the Department of Employment and Economic Development, and everyone just calls us deed. Um, we've, uh, I serve, we've got, uh, five regional analysts uh, throughout the state. I served the northwest third of the state, which is 26 counties, and that includes Beltrami County. And so, uh, our our job is to get, you know, we, uh, our office and and the Bureau of Labor Statistics and other federal agencies produce an awful lot of data. And our job is to get that data in the hands of people like you that could actually use it for decision making and other reasons. So so that's my role. You bet. Anyway, so I'm asked this question a lot, you know, where did all the workers go? And, uh, one, one thing that's been suggested, uh, is that, uh, that I've heard a few times is, well, no one wants to work anymore. And well, if this, if this explains it, then, uh, this is really nothing new because I found a a post from somebody that, uh, searched all the old newspaper clippings for when this has been said, and it's been said for the past 135 years. So I don't think it finally became true, you know, just now. Uh, so this isn't an adequate explanation for me, and I'm going to try to explain it a little better. Uh, just to get an idea of how tight the labor market really is, we use the unemployment rate quite a bit as a measure of tightness. And you can see that in 2022, we were at 3.1%. Uh, that's the tightest of all time, I guess, because county level statistics had been collected since 1990, and that's the that's the lowest unemployment we've ever had. Uh, for 2023 is at 3.5%. So, you know, still extremely tight. That's still a lower unemployment than we had at any time before 2022. Uh, so it's still tight. I looked at at the, uh, statistics for Beltrami County for, uh, the first three months of 2024. It's actually a little bit lower than in 2023. So the unemployment rate hasn't come up, which is great news for the workforce, but it it makes it hard for employers to get the workers they need. So, so where did all the workers go? Well, there's two things going on here simultaneously. One is the short term impacts of COVID. So I call those in my presentation, the acute impacts. And one of those things is just a huge disruption that COVID was. Uh, there was a lot of talk about supply chains for a very long time. There wasn't a lot of talk about the supply of labor chain and how that was disrupted. We had the unemployment rate go from 10.3%, the highest it had ever been recorded in May of 2020, and then it dropped to the lowest ever recorded in September of 2021. So that gives you an idea of the kind of whiplash that was going on in the labor market. The the previous high was in, uh, February of 2009 at 10.2%. And the previous low was in 2018 at 2.7%, I mean, 2.9%. So we went in 16 months the same swing that we had over those nine years, and actually a greater swing because we hit new records. So not everyone could go back to the same job. Uh, people that that got re-employed then had to work out things like childcare and carpooling and all that stuff all over again. So there was a lot of disruption there. The other thing that happened is that COVID could have long term impacts, uh, long COVID, as they call it. Uh, and the Brookings Institute studied all the studies to try to find out what the labor market impact of what was on the labor force. And they estimated that about 3 million full time equivalent workers through the US uh, either worked fewer hours or had to stop working because of long COVID. Now, that's about 1.8% of the entire US labor force. If we apply that to Beltrami County, that would be 450 FTE for the county, which is about half of what the total number of unemployed was for 2023. So there was an impact from long COVID as well. The other thing that we had was increased retirement, or probably more importantly, uh, early retirement and increased retirement. And I'll go through that a little bit more detail. And then also, uh, caregiving, uh, in lieu of work, people had to leave work in order to, uh, care for family members. So the reason, uh, we know from from national information that that's what's been attributed to some of the tight labor market. But I have statistics on employment by age and sex for, uh, Beltrami County. And one thing that I found interesting in these statistics is that female employment declined while male increased, and this is from 2019 to 2022. The other thing I see in the statistics is that the female employment decline was concentrated in the ages 19 to 34. Uh, and so here's the, this is showing up in the statistics, the childcare capacity decrease in Beltrami County was 6.6% during these same years. So, you know, all these kids didn't suddenly start taking care of themselves. Somebody had to take care of them. It fell to family. Uh, the other thing that shows here is early retirements. This is actually overstating it a bit because we had a lot of people turning uh, you know, over these three years, there were a lot of people that were turning 65 and over. Um, and so that's that's going to skew this a bit. I'll show you a correction for that here in a moment. But early retirements show in this age 55 to 64 group with the employment decline. And, uh, but the question that came up in my mind is why was the employment decline nearly double for females than it was for males in this age 55 to 64 group? And if you look at the Beltrami County nursing and residential care employment, it dropped 4.6% during this time. So there's more, you know, one thing that we know, uh, and there's been studies of this, uh, from the current population survey is that full time caregivers are predominantly women. And so when this childcare capacity was impacted by COVID and when, uh, the long term care capacity was impacted by COVID, um, you know, this this caregiving fell to families and and most of it fell to women. So this is, this is showing up is is part of our, uh, tight labor market uh, for people who have to care for family members more so it was done by workers before. So I mentioned before that the the, um, the the population changes can can skew the numbers there when you're just looking at uh, uh, employment by age, uh, because people age every year. So, uh, what I did was I I controlled for that by taking the employment and dividing it by the resident population. And this gives us an employment to population ratio that controls for changes in the population. And what we see is that the female employment to population decline was concentrated in the ages 25 to 34. These are the ages that are most likely to have young children. And the also, uh, early retirements then still show up as a true impact. And it's still about four times more for women than it is for men in that age 55 to 64 group. We also see that, uh, the employment, uh, anyway, so the employment was actually four and a half times more for female as a as a ratio to the population than it was for males. So this is just showing the the caregiving impact that I mentioned before. Now, if we look at the labor force, the number that are either working or actively seeking work, we can see that it increased uh, from 24,500 or so to 20, over 25,000 from 2019 to 2023. So fortunately, there wasn't any alien abduction, and we didn't lose a lot of people. That's not, that's not the issue here. We do have a growing labor force. Uh, so, so, so what's going on here? Why is unemployment rate so low? Why is the labor market so tight in an ongoing basis, even after we're through the pandemic? And if if you start looking at the trend in the labor force, I started drawing a trend line back in 1990. And you can see that the trend line goes up and follows bits pretty well until you get to about 2002. And then the labor force growth starts to drop off. So there's a trend change right about 2002. If we look at the annualized growth rate of the labor force from 1990 to 2022, it was 2.6%. And it was about, you know, a quarter of that from 2002 to 2023. The question is, what happened in 2002? Before 2002, all the, this is all a trend in the baby boomers because before 2002, all the boomers were in that prime working years age group, 25 to to 54. And then started aging out of it. And if we track the aging of the of the baby boomers and look at the changes in the labor force participation, the share of that population that's in the labor force, you can see it drop off with age. So, uh, it just goes through the years and in uh, in 2001, uh, the old, the oldest baby boomer started turning 55. The labor force participation from 45 to 54 dropped then from 55 to 59. And this goes all the way through until we get to 2020 when we can see the oldest boomers are turning 75. And by the time, uh, the late, when you get to age 75, the labor force participation for that age cohort is only 4.9%. So that's what really changed is the labor, the the baby boomer started to leave the labor market. At the same time, the next generation is just way too small to replace them. That's the Gen X. I'm kind of in the older end of that generation, and I, uh, you know, I didn't have any kids to play with when I grew up because there weren't a lot of population, you know, so I became an economist. But, um, the, uh, uh, the other thing that happened though is the millennials, who who is a pretty, a pretty big population group, you know, is actually bigger than the boomers. Uh, many of them moved away in the 15 to 29 year olds. In 2010, there were 11,230 of them. Uh, then 10 years later, there were only 8,536 aged 25 to age 39. So we didn't get a lot of replacement from the millennials because a lot of them moved away. So what we have here is a situation where before COVID hit, um, unemployment was already low because it had reached the previous record in 2018. And the boomers were leaving the labor force. So my point is, is that uh, the, the, um, you know, the COVID pandemic had a lot of impact on tightening the labor force, but a lot of this was baked in before that even happened. And to kind of get a feeling for that, um, we can look at it another way and just look at the change in the labor force throughout the decades. And we can see that every decade back to 1990, the average number of new workers was decreasing from 469 in the 90s to 242 in the in the 2010 to 2020 period. And then we see the impact of COVID with only 73 new workers per year since 2020. So to get an idea of how much of this was baked in before, I went back and looked at the labor force projections before they were produced in 2019, before we ever knew COVID was going to happen. And what I found out was that we expected the labor force to tighten already. In fact, we expected it to tighten more than it actually did, uh, up till now. So the recovery in the labor force from COVID has actually been more than what we may have expected with the previous labor force projections. We actually gained 219 workers from 2020 to 2023. Um, and that corresponds to the 73 number I showed on the previous slide. But we expected only to gain 165 with the previous labor force projections. And so we had people entering, we had more people entering the labor force, uh, during that time. So all this, of course, is based on the population. And like I said, my background is more economics, but I've become more of a demographer to answer these questions. Uh, and we can look at the population projections from 2025 to 2035. And it's, there's a great advantage doing population projections over economic projections is that you can rely on this very reliable principle that every 12 months, people age about a year. And you can't do that for economics. So what we see is that, uh, most of the groups of the labor force are growing. Uh, 15 to 24, there's growth there of 526 for the new labor force entrance. Uh, age 25 to 54, those prime working years, there's pretty good growth there. Uh, I will say that we are expecting Gen Z, uh, to move away like the millennials did. That may or may not happen, but that's what we project based on. Uh, you can see that there's, uh, 8,335 aged 15 to 24 in 2025, which is projected to drop to 5,716 10 years later in 2035. So we'll see if that actually happens. Um, but the the other big, the biggest growth here in the population projections is the age 75 plus. And again, this is the baby boomers aging, and this is going to have huge implications for counties, uh, especially rural counties all over Minnesota and the US, uh, because not only do, uh, well, I mean, people that people eventually retire, uh, most people that are 75 and over are retired, still demanding services, some goods, mainly services, but not contributing to the labor force. So uh, this tightens the labor force even more. And of course, the 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 healthcare requirements of those as people age just increase. Um, and that's a very labor intensive business. So it's something to keep in mind. The other long term trend to keep in mind here is that the younger age cohorts are much more diverse than the older cohorts. So what I'm showing in this chart here is the share of the population, this is in 2020, that are white or black, indigenous or people of color. And if we look at the, if, you know, it's pretty clear that the younger age groups are much more diverse. If we look at the age 10 to 14 year olds in 2020, those are those are, uh, you know, those are the labor force entrance now. Um, it's actually pretty close. It's getting close to 50 50, white and BIPOC for, uh, for that age group. So, um, if if, you know, to the extent that employers are going to grow their workforce with new entrants, uh, the workplaces are going to become a lot more diverse. We can project then the labor force projections into the future. And what that's showing us is that we're doing a little better than what we're expected to do, a little better than we had in the last couple of years. Average 98 new workers per year or 0.4% annualized growth. But that's still a heck of a lot slower than what we had, you know, in in decades past. Um, all the growth is from this generation alpha, those around age 20 to 24 um, and the millennials. And of course, there's actually growth in the age 75 plus in the workforce just from the sheer size, even though the labor force participation rates are really slow, are really, are really small. Percentage wise, it's a huge increase, but it's only 51 people, um, because we're going from a starting point of about 4.8% participation. So um, anyway, it's, it's, uh, it's going to be it's going to be a long term challenge. So the the summary here is that, sure, the short term impacts COVID had a a big impact on the labor force. Uh, but the long term impacts are continuing and are expected to continue on for the foreseeable future. Uh, the COVID 19, um, the, the, uh, as they says, the saying goes, long term demographics is destiny. So every 12 months, people age about a year. And of course, we need to keep in mind the rapid growth in the age seventy five plus population. It's going to have huge implications. But I think one of the main takeaways here is if we, if we want to, if we want to, if, as we get past COVID and we want to, we want to think about the future, you know, any, any innovations or any changes or any successes, uh, to get more workers, whether it's increasing the number of people that want to move to Beltrami County, whether it's increasing the labor force participation in Beltrami County, those sorts of successes aren't just reacting to what happened to COVID. Because this is going to go on for a long time, those things are going to pay off for years and years and years. So it's really a reason for employers and really everybody in the community to be focused on, on the workforce. Uh, because you can come up with something now and you've got at least ten years for it to pay off. And it's going to include increasing worker, workforce diversity, it's going to include increasing productivity. Um, and I think we can expect to have a, a long-term tight labor market. Hopefully you guys have questions.
Any questions for Anthony?
Mr. Chair, I know we're pressed for time, but as a teacher of twelfth grade economics, I, you know, I would like a little, uh, advice here from our resident economists. What do you suggest, um, advice, uh, strategies, uh, for people who are kind of having a tough time navigating the labor market, uh, thinking about technological advancements, automation and, and, um, you know, just globalization. Um, what, what's your advice for folks?
I think, uh, you know, if anything that could be done to gain resiliency and flexibility is going to be the most important to pay off through someone's entire career. Because everything, everything is changing so rapidly. And, you know, that, that's sort of, uh, that's sort of resiliency and flexibility is, is really what's gonna, what's going to make someone successful in the workforce.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Thank you very much. I appreciate being as brief, it was a great topic and you did it well. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Next up, Forest Carbon Project Possibilities. Mr. Moore.
Good afternoon, um, commissioners. It's kind of loud today. Some speakers are kind of tough to follow, but we'll see what we can do here on this. Good afternoon. My name is Dick Moore. I'm the land commissioner here at Beltrami County. And I want to introduce Jeremy Kozlowski, who will show a PowerPoint immediately after I introduce him. You know, as land commissioner, I'm always seeking out new revenue sources. And these forest, um, carbon credits or carbon sequestration has been kind of bounced around by land commissioners across the state for quite a few years. And I decided to take the dive and do a little research and gather information to find out what it's all about with two other land commissioners because we thought at least we'd have three people listening at the same time to a kind of complicated, um, situation. And so we contacted three developers and one developer just didn't, um, show us much. Another one didn't really get back to us like we thought they should. And the climate trust with, where Jeremy is with, um, has stepped up the plate and ran some analysis for us. And just so you know, um, ten counties over in Wisconsin have jumped on board this forest carbon credit, um, uh, projects. And so has Blandon over in Grand Rapids and so is Mopis out of, um, well, they're out of International Falls locally. So I know we're stretched or tight on time here. So with that, I'll introduce Jeremy Kozlowski of the Climate Trust. And he'll give you a kind of overview of what these forest, um, carbon credits are. And should you decide to gather more information, we can try to plan on something in the future also. So with that, I'll leave it to Jeremy.
Thanks, Dick. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thanks for having me. I do have a brief presentation. I know we have short on time, uh, large discussion, obviously. Um, but I'll try and, try and get it in there. So, um, I am part of the Climate Trust. Um, we are based in Portland. We're the oldest, um, nonprofit carbon developer in the nation that we, that we know of. That's qualifier. Um, we've been around since nineteen ninety seven in that space, um, in one way or another, um, with carbon markets. So we've written protocols, we've done the standards ourselves. And so now we are a full-fledged developer. So that means start to finish, um, develop your project, sell your credits, um, and share that revenue back. So we operate basically in three sectors, improved forest management, reforestation and avoided grassland conversion. Um, so here we would be talking about improved forest management, um, protocol. Uh, our team there, um, Julius Peste is our executive director and then, um, myself, a little bit about myself. I spent over fifteen years in Wisconsin, um, as a county forest administrator, um, and in multiple counties. What got me interested in the carbon world about five years ago was, uh, we had a closure of the Wisconsin Rapids Mill in Wisconsin. If you're familiar, um, they consume twenty five percent of all our pulpwood in the state. We're always looking for revenues, diversifying your forest, um, diversifying your revenue chances, choices, I should say. Uh, and so a carbon project was presented and something that made sense at that time for that county. So from there, uh, I came here. Uh, and then we have, uh, some Madeline and, uh, Kyler Powon. Um, so we, we have a small team, uh, on the forestry side. Our whole nonprofit is small. We're only about thirteen people total. Uh, but we do work nationwide. Uh, I'm still based in Wisconsin, but I just flew in from Oregon today. So, or yesterday. Um, I can kind of skip this in lieu of time, but basically a credit is equivalent to one uh, metric ton of carbon dioxide atmospheric equivalent. So you can see there MT CO two E. Um, I'm not an analyst, but I know there's more equations that go into that than just two thousand pounds of carbon. Uh, but that's why we call it a credit. It's a lot easier. There's two market, two types of markets in the United States. There's a compliance market, so cap and trade. I'm sure you've heard of that. Uh, and then the voluntary carbon market. The voluntary carbon market is the one we've looked at here for Beltrami for you. Um, the compliance market exists in California and Washington. Um, California projects can be nationwide, but they come with a slew of other restrictions and legislative rules. Um, so we typically work, uh, almost exclusively in the voluntary market. So demand over time, uh, as you can see, this market is young, but it's maturing. And so ten years ago, there still wasn't a huge demand, but as we've seen in the last couple of years, uh, and projections moving forward, that demand is, is increasing significantly. Um, prices are moving up, uh, more companies are making net zero, um, commitments, uh, and this is part of that solution for them. So IFM, improved forest management, uh, forest management activity, which increases forest carbon stocks compared to business as usual. So this goes into, um, you know, what are you getting credit for on your landscape? What are you committing to, uh, with your, with your forest? So first and foremost, with a program like this, you're creating, you're diversifying, right? You're creating another forest product. You're not going to see it on a semi hauling out, but it's another product that, that does exist. Um, and there's small little changes you can do to increase those stocks over time, uh, whether that's increasing riparian zones, uh, rotation length. Um, sometimes you're chasing timber in some marginal stands. Um, you don't really have to chase that now if you have a diversified revenue source. Uh, and it does, it does mean a long-term commitment. So in the voluntary market, that's a forty-year commitment by the landowner. This jumps into that a little bit. Um, so there's, there's some reporting that needs to happen on a yearly basis to us, um, from your forestry department. Um, and we put that in and make sure that we're running the model correctly. Um, and we have long-term plots out on the landscape, measuring tree growth, uh, and equating that into carbon sequestration every single year. Uh, you do need to maintain your forest certification, which you already have. And then there are some penalties for an early with withdrawal or an intentional reversal. So if, well, we won't get into hypotheticals. So the process there, uh, as Mr. Moore mentioned earlier, we conducted a feasibility study for Beltrami County. Um, that's the initial part of any project. So you know what's out there. Uh, is it a fit for both of you? How is that going to look moving forward? Uh, and then this is just the multiple, um, steps into that. So, uh, even once you contract, you look at almost two years until the project is producing revenue. Um, by the time you do your, conduct your forest inventory, do all the modeling, write your greenhouse gas plan. Those are things we handle, um, and then go through the issuance of the credits and sales. So nuts and bolts, down to you. Running through our feasibility study, we came through roughly one point six million carbon credits, uh, over a twenty-year crediting period. So in the voluntary market, you get twenty years of crediting, twenty years of monitoring. Um, so you really, all that revenue comes in in that first twenty years. Um, so based on our estimates, um, with the markets, uh, today, uh, that would give you roughly twenty four point three million dollars in that first twenty years. Now that's broken into more specifics, um, if you look through the full feasibility study, I guess you would say, but in a nutshell, that's what we see here. In talking to Mr. Moore and knowing parts of county government and the work you do in protecting watersheds, recreational areas, wildlife habitat, timber production, carbon sequestration fits right into that and can actually help you do all of those things while producing another forest product, uh, and a different revenue stream into the future. So once again, diversifying that timber portfolio or forest portfolio that you have, um, because you need that to generate revenue, to offset your levy, to offset other things, um, improve your infrastructure. So it, I'm speaking to the choir, but, uh, so I think I went fast enough.
Jeremy, you did a great job. I appreciate that. Um, I guess just to, um, open it up for some questions for Jeremy. I, I, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, um, I had a question about, uh, said that, um, Beltrami County Forestlands could produce, um, approximately one point six. What, what was tribal lands included in all this or, or was that separated or?
Tra- tribal lands are not included in that estimate.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Craig, did you have anything?
Uh, thank you. Uh, Jeremy, where would that twenty four point three or whatever it was, million dollars come from? Is that increased costs on a, on a variety of manufacturers' products or, or whatever that they would have to be buying those carbon credits because of new rules or?
Yep. Um, great question. Thank you. Uh, so the twenty four point three million comes from the sale of, of the carbon credits. We're operating within the voluntary market. So you're voluntarily choosing to sell those credits and buyers are voluntarily choosing to buy those credits. So when Amazon or Ford has a commercial online and says they're going closer to net zero, um, this is a small part of that process for them to reduce their carbon footprint. Can't be the whole thing. They still need to invest in technology, create new technology. Um, but these nature-based solutions are part of that. So they, whether that's, uh, once again, Ford or Conical Phillips or whoever that may be, um, sometimes local companies buy that to offset their carbon emissions. And so they have, um, they have that budgeted into their, their process.
Uh, thank you. That, to me, it sounds like a, a feel-good thing. I mean, we're, we're already doing forest management. We're already doing a lot of the stuff that you talked about, just that we would get paid for what we're already doing and that they would be utilizing these credits to make people feel like they're doing something to offset their, their emissions or whatever. I just, I just, I think it's just a feel-good thing that isn't, isn't based in, in anything other than that.
So I guess, Richard, did you have something?
No, go ahead. I'll, I'll go last. Okay. Yeah. Uh, I think this is another way of looking, if we're looking at our budget, this is an added increase because there will still be forest work. Uh, the, the harvesters will still be, you know, when they first hear this, they're going to think, oh, we're going to be cut out of the, of the pie. That's not the purpose behind this. This is just saying there'll be some changes perhaps, but there'll still be plenty of pulp, uh, to be cut and harvested.
Yeah, this, this includes sustained harvesting within your forest. Um, you know, that's, we appreciate active management and we actually at, at the Climate Trust, that's the projects we like to do. Um, because that shows your commitment, your involvement into those projects. Once again, this is just another layer of that cake or salad, whatever that may be, um, to add to those, um, benefits. Yep.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I'm certainly, uh, interested in, in keeping the ball rolling on this. I mean, this could be another twenty four million dollars in revenue for the county for doing what we're already doing. This is a, this is a really good opportunity. I, I'm definitely interested to, um, uh, see what the next step here is. I was a little hesitant seeing the forty-year contract thing, but thinking about it more is, you know, our, our very own planning commission makes decisions at every meeting that last a hundred years. Um, so I, I really don't see any downsides with this, uh, Mr. Kozlowski?
Both of them.
I thought you did a good presentation, so thank you very much for the info.
Sir, so Jeremy, I was, my, my concern would have been, they talked about the twenty-year revenue stream. What about that second twenty year? Is it that again, or more, or less? Is there a drop off? So because we're going to, if, if we were to do anything like that, forty-year commitment, we're only talking about twenty-year stream of income.
Yeah, yep. And that twenty four three includes that second twenty years of monitoring costs. So we put that like in our model. So if I had more time, I'd go super in-depth, but you get twenty years of generating credits and revenue. That second twenty years is, um, a monitoring phase where you will pay for, uh, verifications every five years. And so you'll already know how that process works in the first twenty. Um, it stays the same. Ultimately, it, what it does is say, um, in the standard, in the ACR standard, you can't just get paid for twenty years of doing, doing good stuff and then take all your land and slick it off like on year twenty one is what that amounts to. So that's the forty-year agreement. Compliance market is a hundred years, um, after your crediting period. That's another, um, difference there that makes those a little bit harder to, to sell to a landowner.
Now, obviously with us being in the, in the wood products business, uh, a big concern of mine would be for loggers and, and, and for their work. Um, but I think, you know, if, if it doesn't affect our logging, it doesn't affect our wood products industries. And you make some extra money, I, it, it's worth at least continuing the conversation. Yep. Dick, go ahead. Dick, come on up. Yep.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Jeremy, thank you.
Just to mention, um, we don't harvest as much as we grow every year or every twelve months. So everyone will look at it after our last speaker. And, um, so we wouldn't have to do anything different for our harvesting. We can harvest what we're doing. We don't have to make any changes with that whatsoever. So the amount of wood we would still provide for the market and the logging community would remain the same. So that's why I just wanted to leave you with that. So thanks for your time.
Needed that. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So if, uh, the land commissioner is putting us in, in this situation, does that mean that he's putting off his retirement for twenty years?
Is that a forty-year commitment, Dick?
I'll be a hundred and five at forty years. So chances are I, I won't be here. At least I won't have the mind to speak upfront anymore. So, but thank you.
All right. Thank you for that presentation.
We'd be lovely to come back again to provide more information.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, Dick, are you teeing up the? Laurie is. Okay, Laurie. Hey, Laurie, good to see you.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Um, my name is Lori Clark, Recreation Resource Manager with the NRM Department. And I am here to just kind of give a quick introduction, uh, for the ski club. Um, they're looking at building a storage building. We've kind of gone through a whole bunch of different locations in the last several months. Um, and we've kind of discussed out at the highway department complex, uh, we've gone through a bunch of different clearances. We've talked to, um, the county administrator. We've gone through a bunch of different clearances. We've talked to the county administrator, the highway engineer, facilities management, things like that to see if they were willing and they said we would be willing to look at it. So we thought we would bring it to the board, but I'm going to turn it over to Pat Dene at the Bemidji Area Cross Country Ski Club to kind of give you a little bit of history about their needs and things like that. Well, just a little brief. We'll just, yeah, I'll just turn it over to you to spend a brief thing and.
So, okay, welcome, Pat.
So we are looking for a building because a, a longtime founding member of the ski club, Bob Manobello and his family, they're in a situation where we can no longer use their building. And so that puts us in a situation where we don't have the luxury of a, of a free storage facility anymore. And we've got.
Mark, how many sleds and how many trailers and how many grooming, piece of grooming equipment?
We maintain about $300,000 worth of equipment, 10 sleds, 12 runners, 15 rollers, trailers, ATVs, mowers, tractors.
And, and most of the trails we groom are county land, you know, between Mobile Maze and Three Island, at least a lion's share of them are. And so we're, we're a pretty integral partner with Beltrami County in keeping those trails, trails open and accessible and multi-users. You know, the work we do for the ski season keeps them open all year round as well. So that's the gist of why we're looking for a building, a place to put a building.
So, so Pat, can we just clarify, you're not looking for the county to build you a building? You're looking for us to lease some land to you to, for you to, I just want to make sure we clarify.
We have $100,000 initial grant from the Nielsen Foundation. We're hoping that's maybe half to third enough and we'll keep looking for more until we can figure out, we don't know exactly what we're building, so it's hard to have a budget, but we have a good start.
Perfect. Questions for Pat? Jim?
Mr. Chair, I guess not so much for Pat, but maybe Bruce or, or from the board. I know that we have discussed, you know, maybe expansions or developments, capital improvements. So in the, at the highway shop sometime in the future, it's kind of wondering if this might impact that or is there enough property out there for, for this expansion?
So I think Bruce, I think. But Tom, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We've talked about Commissioner Sumner's concerns and vetted out a potential site, bring it up here on the map for you to look at. At the front end of the highway department on the south side there, we have a parcel, well, not parcel, but we have a section of an existing parcel that we occupy that we believe would be out of the way and allow for future expansion of the impound lot as well as the highway department infrastructure. You can see here on the screen that essentially the two white buildings on the very right side, that would be the east side of the property is the area that we're targeting. The longer or larger white building would be the Environmental Services Department shed that was approved or is in process of being approved in the budget. And then on the south, just south of that, the little square white building is the building that we've contemplated in concept for the ski club. And the idea here is that co- co-locating those two facilities in that location allows for maximum flexibility and utilization of the parcels that we have out there for existing services and existing programs without having any inconvenience to those. It also allows for us to improve security potentially on the highway department side as well as potentially the impound lot and also create connectivity between those two lots as well.
Okay. Any other questions? I guess the key point to keep in mind is the good work that the ski club is doing to keep trails open for the county. We appreciate that. What action is that going to be coming up on?
It's, it's not coming up on your meeting yet. What we wanted to do, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, is to introduce the concept to you before we put a lot of staff time and effort into drafting up a lease and working up the concept plan and areas and those kinds of things. This is really just a check-in meeting to make sure you're okay with the concept, you're okay generally with the, the approach that we're, we're discussing. And if, if you are, then you can direct staff to continue to work with the ski club to draft a potential lease and also further refine the concept and the location. And then bring that back to you for an approval or additional discussion in a future time.
Craig, comments?
Yeah, I, I think as long as Bruce is okay with it and Administrator Barry is, is okay with it, it certainly looks like it wouldn't, wouldn't be very intrusive to the highway department property. And so I think we should go for it.
Looks like we have a head nod to proceed.
Excellent.
All right. Thanks, Craig.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Lori. Thanks, thanks, guys. Bruce, get some highway grant updates for us.
Good evening, Commissioners. Guess I've narrowly been in the practice of introducing myself every time and I should be, I see. But Bruce Hasbrouck, County Engineer. The first item.
That's not for us. It's for the people viewing.
I know. The first item I have for you is good news. We received a grant, $1.5 million grant from the Local Road Improvement Program. It is a state grant program. And it is for our project on Kasaw 20 on the north side of the lake. This project we've been talking about for a few years would be the reconstruction of 20 to an urban section and an off-road trail. It would also include the township's sewer project. And so that is a, a good grant to get some money from. With that, getting those dollars, we now kind of put a timeframe to that project. Northern Township is well aware of that we got this grant and they are, are feeling that they can meet the timeline of our grant, which is a 25 or 26 construction. And that is kind of fitting their timeframe of what they're hoping to, to be able to do too. So but that, us getting that grant does kind of put a timeframe to our, to our road construction project. So we'll be moving ahead with that. The same grant program on Northern Township did receive some funding also. They received about $1.2 million to construct the Fairgrounds Road. This grant was also where we helped the City of Ten Strike apply for road improvements on their main, was it Main Street? A project that we were kind of working with them. They were not successful. And then I was also where the Eccles Township applied and they were not successful. But we did get a couple of projects in the, in the county with, I got funded through that program. The next item I have for you is the potential of coming up with, adopt a roundabout program. Adopt a roundabout program would be where we would have volunteers. They would adopt the center island of a roundabout and help beautify it with landscaping of some sort. It would be similar to our adopt a highway program where volunteers adopt a road section, beautify it by picking up garbage. But this one here, the adopt a roundabout would be, again, the volunteers would be adopting the center island of a roundabout. So we would potentially put together a policy for the board to consider if the board would like to move forward with this. Again, we would have the terms of ensuring traffic safety, volunteer safety, some parameters and how that program would work. But this one would be a little bit different. You know, they're actually doing something physical. Instead of just picking up garbage off that center island, they're actually putting some, again, flowers, landscaping, or doing something out there. So we would want to have some parameters, make sure that they're, they're not altering the roundabout, the island too much and/or not doing something controversial. Got to make sure that everybody is going to be good with what we're doing out there. So we would want to make sure that we put some parameters together on how we would handle or approve what they're doing out there. And so if, again, if there's board consensus, I would put together a, a policy, a draft policy for the board to consider. I do have one question that is kind of, again, in my head and others of how we would recognize the volunteers. Adopt a highway program, they get a big blue sign. We don't want to put a big blue sign in our center island of our roundabouts. The one example that I did find out there, they put in like a realtor size sign. They'd put it in there and take it out every, every year. So it's not there when they're, we're doing, it's no removal. But that was one consideration or one question that we kind of had was, well, how would we recognize these volunteers for the work they do? But yes, I'm open to questions and wondering the board's thoughts on that potential.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead, Craig.
Yeah, say, Bruce, what would the, I know I've had some constituents inquire about the tall grass around like the, especially the one out by the Gene Dillon Elementary and, and stuff. Could we potentially incorporate the, the ditch, you know, right next to the roundabouts and put the sign acknowledging them in the ditch instead of on the roundboat?
Yeah, that would be one way of doing it. You could do, do it in advance of the roundabout and just say, you know, the roundabout's adopted by.
Yep.
I guess I hadn't thought of that one. But the trouble there is you got four, normally you have four approaches to a roundabout. So are we, you know, put it up four signs or two signs or is one enough? But that would be one. That, that could be a consideration.
And then I don't know if they'd be able to, to, you know, cut some of the, the tall grasses or something that so that they don't have to worry about people getting worried about hitting deer coming out of the, out of the ditches. I know that you mentioned before that it was a little challenging because of the other signs and everything to be able to get our equipment in there to mow that and so on. So that might be an opportunity as well.
Yeah, on the, on the roundabouts, all of the roundabouts have been planted with native grass and that is meant for no maintenance. Because we really don't want to put the mower tractor or even be up there with a lawnmower constantly maintaining the roundabout. So they were a low maintenance or no maintenance type of grass, a native grass that was up there. So to some people, you know, native grasses are, look like weeds, but those are actually just native, native plants that are out there right now.
I was referring to the, the ditch area and the, and the tall grass in the, in the ditch that doesn't get mowed or because of the signs and the difficulty to, to get at it with our bigger equipment. You know, if the people that are maintaining the center island could also do some weed whacking or, or mowing of the tall grass near the roundabout as part of the project. Just a thought.
Oh.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Regrettably, I'm not so supportive of the idea at this time. I'm just way too concerned about safety and liability to the county if anything were to happen to any volunteers. I just think a, a roundabout is a much more dangerous situation to be involved with. But I do think the corner of Roosevelt and Paul Bunyan Drive southeast would be a perfect location for a future roundabout.
That's a new idea.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, but regrettably, I'm just not supportive at this time.
Tim, did you have a?
Yeah, Mr. Chair. Bruce, how many roundabouts do we have and are, are we planning any future roundabouts?
Six, and we have the one where we just received funding for.
Okay.
So I just. Another wish one.
Yeah. So are, are other counties doing this or any, any?
I was not aware. I could not find of where anybody has, another county has a program out there. The examples I did have were like another state. But I did not see anything in Minnesota. I do know some are just beautifying themselves. You know, because there are some roundabouts out there that are a lot prettier than ours for sure. But we have had groups, I mean, even like the city, Bemidji had asked about, you know, adopting one to make it, you know, the gateway to the city, make it prettier. The high school, you know, the schools have had people, teachers ask about doing it, but we just never really had anybody get serious about it.
Yeah, you know, I'm, I have the same concerns about safety, but I mean, I'm open to, to learning more about it. So thank you.
Richard, you have a question?
Yeah, who, who, is it the state line up by the northern school? Is that state, the roundboat?
That's half and half.
Okay, who maintains it?
Again, that wouldn't be a, a, nobody maintains it. It's a, again, the center island would be native grasses. So there's no, no mowing or anything going on there.
Okay.
But that one would be, I'm going to say it's mostly up to us to maintain that one.
Sure. Well, we traveled to Minneapolis quite a few times and I noticed that they used to have signs about the highway about driving sober or driving a certain way. And now they blanked them out because they found they were distracting drivers and it was causing a problem. And so that's, would be one concern I would have in our roundabouts is if they're allowed to put signs, large signs or whatever, people coming around being distracted and causing an issue. But I'm open to looking at some suggestions that would come from your office.
Yeah, and if, if I may, I mean, a few of the parameters that we don't want is we don't want people walking to the center island. You don't want, we don't want attraction there that they're going to go take pictures or do something. So we're, you don't want that type of a, you know, landscape or an attraction. With this volunteer group, definitely there would be volunteers that would be whatever, doing some work at that time in their center island. But we would want to have, I mean, we would have parameters in there, just like our adopt a highway where everybody's going to have a safety vest. You're going to have a supervisor per so many people, you know, to deal with watching for traffic and, you know, all of, so we would want to have those kind of parameters in our, in our policy. But the, yeah, the, again, you're not wanting something to attract people or distract people when they're driving. However, you do see roundabouts out there with, with, you know, landscaping in them. So I guess I was looking to have volunteers do it. We just, it's not something that we're wanting to tackle and take care of, but potentially can have volunteers.
I guess I'd like to take the temperature of the Commissioners as to whether Bruce should waste any more time on this or to go ahead and spend some effort on it. So I've just, I, I've heard from Joe. Tim, are you in favor of at least letting Bruce explore this?
We should form a committee to explore this. I'll fight with whatever the board decides.
Richard?
I'm, I'm okay with looking at a plan or, or more suggestions, but I'm.
Craig?
Just kind of hippie.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of Bruce pursuing it further and, and seeing what kind of a program he comes up with.
Okay. And I guess personally, I, I wouldn't mind if you want to spend the time to bring a policy for us, that's fine. But I do share Commissioner Gould's concern about the safety aspect and, and the native grasses are planted there for a purpose and it's to not have to do a darn thing, just like in front of North Country Dental. Anyway, so I guess the, the answer is if you want to work on a policy to bring back to us and then we can discuss it in further detail then.
Okay.
Thank you, Bruce. Administrator's update. Didn't think we were going to get that one in, did you?
All right. I'll be brief. I know we're running out of time. Just want to update you. We had a very good meeting with the Red Lake Tribal Leadership last Tuesday. The items that we had mentioned that we wanted to discuss were discussed with them. I think it was a good collaborative, good opportunity to listen and learn by each of the groups. Moving on, we were also unfortunately unsuccessful in acquiring some grant funds from the state for the GIS remonumentation program. Those of you might recall, last year, we decided not to put money in the budget to continue remonumentation because we had, we thought a good chance about capturing these grants. Unfortunately, those grants were dispersed. There was quite a bit of requests for the grant funding and of course, not as much funding as available. So we were going to spend about $210,000 to restore and preserve 149 section corners in Taylor Township with that money. And also $190,000 to restore and preserve about 133 section corners in Sugar Bush Township. So those two projects are now on hold until we go through either another grant appropriation, competitive process, or we alternatively put that funding into the budget. We don't have money this year to do that in. Uh, we don't have money this year to do that in embedded in the budget, so we'll be potentially looking at uh how to address the continuation of this important project. Uh, through the next budget committee process. So just giving you update on that. Uh, wanted also let you know that the classification and compensation project is continuing. Uh, we received four impressive responses to our request for proposals. Um, after narrowing those uh proposals down to two, we did do interviews. Uh, with two firms, and we did select Baker Tilly as the recommended firm, uh, which happens to be the firm that we currently uh utilize uh today. Uh, we're working on developing a contract, and once we have that contract uh completed, we'll bring it back to the board for your review and potential approval. Uh, also letting you know that uh we're deep in the hiring process for the Natural Resources Director position. Um, we remain uh in process uh through uh, we conducted interviews yesterday, and so we're still sort of in that process. Uh, the selection has not been made, um, but we are just, as I mentioned, uh, continuing conversations uh in how to proceed on that particular hiring. Uh, really quickly, uh, mostly I know that the board is aware of this, but mostly for the public uh redistricting. Uh, the judge has accepted the redistricting commission's uh map. Uh, that will become effective uh and will be in place for the November election this year. Uh, the maps of each individual commissioner district have now been updated on the county's website, and also we've updated. Uh, the entire map of all the districts together, so the public can see those. Uh, we were kind of holding off to wait to see. Uh, whether or not the judge would take an action on this, and so now that he has, uh, we've officially published those maps on the county's website. Um, lastly, I uh, we do need a couple of. Uh, commissioners to cover the chat about program for July second seventeen, September seventeenth and December third. Um, if we have anybody available for those dates, um, and we don't have to know necessarily today, those are sort of out in the future. I can send an email with my weekly update to you as well and remind you of those dates, but. Um, that would be good for us to be able to get uh back on the schedule to ensure that we have coverage for the chat about show. Other than that, I'll stand for any questions you might have.
Any questions for commission or for Administrator Barry? Nope, okay. Uh, anybody else have anything that they need to bring up at this time other than, uh, did you look at your agendas? Is there any? Um, comments on the agenda coming up?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I will have to leave the meeting early tonight. Um, maybe after the assessor's uh presentation, uh. My grandson's birthday, first birthday today, so I want to make sure that I make it back home in time to for cake and ice cream, so.
Okay. Uh. And Richard, while he's being, Tim is going to be gone, I'm going to hand these out right now. These are for the hamburger cookout, which will be at our uh be happening at our meeting coming up next time. Uh, it's for honoring law enforcement, fire department and public service professionals. We've had that before uh over in a. Area, outside area by the uh courthouse. So uh here's an invite from the Farm Bureau to you. Okay? If you have anyone that you know that you want to hand them out to, go ahead and let me know. Anything for you, Craig?
Nope, I'm good. Thanks.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
If I might, um, we would ask that you pull the consent agenda item seven A. Uh, there's been a slight correction to the minutes, and so we'd like to run that through you. You can put that on the regular agenda if you wouldn't mind, and then we can walk you through what that amendment is um before you adopt it.
Got it.
Thank you.
You got that?
Mr. Chair, what do we want to put that under?
Uh, twelve A.
Twelve A, okay, so seven A will become twelve A?
Yep.
All right.
Thank you, Craig.
Yep, thank you.
He's Johnny on the spot. All right, with that, we'll. Adjourn this meeting and take a valid two minute break. And we'll be back at five.
Sounds good.